The Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system or the school board only. During that thirty minutes, only those items will be discussed. I am aware that there are many here tonight that need to feel a passion to discuss what has happened the last couple of days with one of our school board members. I will be moving that discussion to the end of the business portion of the meeting. It will be televised. You must fill out a form, just like the regular public comments. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and they are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM, and that is for both public comment sessions, 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Kelly King, District Five.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District One.
Here.
Mr. Bobby James, District Three.
Here.
Ms. Angie Boynton, District Four.
Here.
Mrs. Beth McCall, District Two.
Here.
Dr. Heidi Mayer, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Paul Gibbs, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Mr. James Jackson, Social Worker, please introduce the individuals who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is James Jackson. I'm a Marion County Public School Social Worker for the school system and have been for the last sixteen years. And these are my three sons, Carter Jackson, who's a 10th grader at Forest High School, Campbell Jackson, who is a 7th grader at Osceola Middle School, and my youngest, Collier Jackson, who is a 4th grader at Ward Highlands Elementary School. I want to say thank you very much to the school board and the superintendent for allowing us to come up here and talk about Red Ribbon Week. That's why we're adorned in red, as we usually do. Red Ribbon was officially organized back in 1988 in California after the death of a special agent with the DEA, Enrique Camerano. He was killed in the line of duty in regards to his work against, with drug, excuse me, drug traffickers. Each year in October, over eighty million students, parents, adults participate in Red Ribbon throughout the United States in solidarity against substance abuse within their homes, schools, neighborhoods, and communities. We wear ribbon, and red ribbons to show that we want and need a drug-free life. Substance abuse affects our entire community in so many negative ways. Some of these consequences from substance abuse create, ruin, financial ruin for families, relationships, severe health complications, and even death. This year, Red Ribbon is going to be during the weeks of October 22nd through October 26th. The annual kickoff will be held at the Ocala Police Department, as usual, from 5:30 to 7:30. We're going to have free entertainment. Vendors will be doing raffles, will be giving things away. There will be dancers, DJs. Different organizations are going to be giving things away for the vendors. Additionally, there'll be free food to anybody who shows up. I would like to take a moment and thank some of the sponsors that helped make this event successful each year. Marion County Children's Alliance, Community Council Against Substance Abuse, also known as CASA, Drug-Free Communities, Marion County Health Department, Tobacco-Free Partnership in Marion County, Florida Counter-Drug Task Force, Things To Do, One Blood, Brooklyn's Backyard, Ocala Police Department, and St. Leo University. There are many other organizations and sponsors who help make this event successful, and they provide a lot of man-hours and supplies, and we also want to say thank you to them as well. Red Ribbon is something that happens annually within our community, and to me, it's the only time that we, as a community, not just the school system, but all the agencies in Marion County and in the private sector as well, we all stand up, we take a stance against substance abuse. And I love to see this time of year because it just brings us all together. So with that in mind, please come out, support Red Ribbon. We have schools doing the annual school spirit contest. We'll be sending judges out. They'll be working towards a $500 reward and trophy. So please, if you guys have the time, love to see you at the Ocala Police Department, 5:30 to 7:30, October 22nd. Thank you so much again for allowing us to come and do the inspiration, and we'd like to ask you all to please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Jackson, I would personally like to thank you for what you're doing as the Chairman of the School Board and as the Executive Director of the Marion County Children's Alliance. With the opioid epidemic, opioid and heroin epidemic that we have, I truly believe that the only way we're going to solve this is through education with our children. So I want all of our schools to participate in Red Ribbon and help us kick this bad, bad problem. Thank you so much.
Thank you again so much for allowing us to come tonight. Y'all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, boys, for being here.
Thank you.
Ready?
Yes. I recommend approval of the agenda for the October 9th, 2018, School Board Meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting.
They have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation. Moved by Ms. Boynton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. James. All those in favor, please vote aye and opposed like sign. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the August 9th, 2018 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
Second.
Moved by Ms. King, seconded by Mr. James. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor, please vote aye and opposed like sign. Motion passed, 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the August 14th, 2018 School Board Meeting? Moved by Ms. Boynton. Seconded by Ms. King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor, please vote aye and opposed like sign. Motion passed, 5-0. Mr. Mark Bianello, Executive Director of Career and Technical Education, would like to recognize the Morgridge Family Foundation through United Way of Marion County for the support of the Marion Technical College CDL program.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, Dr. Mayor and school board members, and Mr. Gibbs and Mrs. Lopez. So if I, if I sound like a broken record when I'm up here, that's, that's good.
We're glad.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm shooting for. What we're trying to accomplish in career and technical education, three things. We want to improve the quality of our CTE programs. We want to expand choice for our students, and we want to help meet the workforce and economic development needs of our community and our region. Now, here's what, here's what we know. We know in isolation, we as educators can't solve all three, or we can't be as successful in all three of our goals. But we know when we work together as a team, when we collaborate, when we have true partnership, that's when the magic can happen. That's when we can move mountains, and that's when we can truly be successful. A little bit later on in public comments, you're going to hear from some of our, our friends with the Florida Masonry Association, real excited about the partnership that we have there. But to begin with, it is my pleasure to introduce some additional friends that we have. I'll, I'll ask Scott Quintelf, who's the CEO of the United Way, to join us up here, which he has. Dean Blinkhorn, from the Chamber Economic Partnership, to join us as well, and Mr. Kevin Shealy, who's no stranger to these board meetings. Mr. Shealy is the CEO of the Chamber Economic Partnership, and I'll remind the board and our community members that it is the number-one ranked chamber in the state of Florida. Mr. Shealy.
Yeah. Mark, thank you, School Board and, and Dr. Mayor. You know, we're very excited. We talked recently, when I was here and we were able to give out some checks, about partnerships, and that that really is the key, and that we can accomplish so much more when we're all able to partner together. And so one of the needs that we've been able to identify and, and work with the school board very closely with and with MTC is on CDL program. And so that program, as we were able to work, and looking at originally starting with the College of Central Florida, and then as we continued to go down that road and bring all of our industry partners together, over forty different companies came and sat and talked about what they needed in a program, how that needed to work. The MTC and Mark and his team were fantastic about helping to put that together. And then, because they helped to write the plan, it was much easier to go back to these companies who were willing, like R&amp;L, which made the incredible donation of the trucks, and Capri Furniture, and the city and the county, and so many other companies which have stepped up to help support this program. But we know, as we were coming down the end and getting the new site ready and the new pad, that there was a gap in funding, and that we needed some additional funds. We've been able, we were invited by United Way to partner with them on the Progress Donnellan Initiative, which is really a Marion County initiative, and were able to present to the Morgridge Family Foundation, which loves partnerships. They loved being able to see other businesses and the community coming together to talk about this gap. And I have to tell you, I was prepared for a really big presentation to them. It took about ninety seconds on the phone for them to say absolutely we'll come forward. And so they have contributed $75,000 to help the CDL program finish the pad that's needed for that. And so today, we would like to present to, to the school board and to MTC, you already have the real check for $75,000, but the ceremonial check for $75,000 from United Way through the Morgridge Family Foundation for this exciting initiative. And we look forward, as we continue to look at how we grow career technical education, the more engaged businesses can be, the more opportunities they have to have involvement and real skin in the game with that, and so we can talk about how they can be engaged in future projects as well. So thank you for that, and I think if we're ready, we'll do a picture. Mark?
Sure.
Y'all come up here. Up here.
Come on. Mark Bianello. We do better that way. Sure.
Oh, Ms. McCall.
Yes.
Before we move forward.
Yes.
We need to just pause for a moment, and Mr. Christian and Dr. Grantham need to approach the podium, please. This is where you just trust me.
Okay.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Ms. McCall, you do me a favor, please. Will you please come stand in front of the dais?
Trust us.
Trust, it's a trust fall. We're doing a trust fall.
Trust us.
An exercise. Face this way. And we have a very special presentation for you. Can you know this, young lady? This is Ms. Sandra Collins, the music teacher at Shady Hill Elementary. Ms. Collins?
Hello, my name is Sandra Collins. I am the music educator at Shady Hill Elementary, and also currently serve on the Board of Directors as District Five Chair for the Florida Elementary Music Educators Association. I am here today representing both the FMEA and the Florida Music Education Association to help recognize an outstanding, and if you will, highly effective, school board member within Marion County Public Schools. The school board member being recognized tonight demonstrates constant and ardent support of the music and fine arts programs in Marion County Public Schools, where she has served on the school board since 2016. This full support of music education has resulted in enhancing K-12 music within our county. But in case you are not aware of her many strengths in this area that qualify her for much praise and accolade, let me please elaborate on her many merits. She promoted the creation of a new Marion County Public School Coordinator of Fine Arts position, focusing on only K-12 music, art, and theater, and dance, after attending the FMEA Awards Ceremony two years ago in support of Mr. Ryan Bennett, and also seeing the promotion of high-quality music education within many other counties in the state of Florida. She also headed the most recent Referendum Steering Committee to continue our Marion County One-Mill Referendum that supports music education for all K-12 students. And she works tirelessly throughout the community to ensure that music education is valued as a high-priority core subject for our students. In fact, she's even known throughout Marion County as the person that everyone would like to work for. Her passion for music and educating all of Marion's students is infectious, and many jump at the chance to do what they can to support her and our students. The Florida Music Education Association each year celebrates one school board member from the entire state of Florida, who must have demonstrated a significant contribution in support of music programs and curricula in the district schools. This should include exemplary programs of standards-based sequential music curriculum offered as part of the school day throughout elementary, middle, and high schools. The candidate also must have demonstrated evidence of district-wide policies and long-range plans for music education at all levels, and must have demonstrated evidence of equitable access to music programs across all grade levels, including financial support of music instruction in the district. Chairwoman Beth McCall clearly meets all these criteria and more. Chairwoman Beth McCall's enduring support and clear passion for high-quality K-12 music education in Marion County Public Schools make her the Florida Music Education Association's 2019 School Board Member of the Year. You will officially be awarded your award in January at the Florida Music Education Association's Annual Conference in Tampa. Here's your nomination packet. The resume and bio that you gave your grandson for a school project is in that packet, as well as nineteen letters, nineteen letters of recommendation from Marion County Public Schools and throughout the Ocala community. You will be receiving multiple emails in the next week from myself and the FMEA. Congratulations, Beth McCall, the Florida Music Education Association's 2019 School Board Member of the Year.
So I'm not normally speechless. I am.
Only the three people in the middle matter right now.
It's just a part of my family.
Hey, how are you?
That's good news.
Is there a way to get the packet, the copy of it, those letters? And she's got a copy.
Absolutely.
Copy and paste it. I'd like to write that Friday. I'm going to be off Friday probably, but I want to write it before late Thursday, if not tomorrow.
Well, to say the least, I am truly honored and humbled by this tremendous award. And as many of you in the audience know, and I see my very dear friend Matt Wardell, and we've taken many music journeys together and will continue to do so, music is a very large part of my life. It helps to ground me, and I want to be sure that all children have that opportunity. So again, thank you. I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board tonight.
Good evening. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speakers, speaker forums are also located on the same table. The completed forums were due to the school board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, Item Six, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. Thank you for your attention to the board's rules.
Madam Secretary, do we have speakers for agenda items or for district, school district items?
We do.
Okay. First speaker, please.
Donna Hinson.
Is this? Okay. Let's move it up.
Good afternoon, school board members, Dr. Mayor. I thank you for letting me have this opportunity today. My name is Donna Hinson. I am the Executive Director of the Masonry Association of Florida, and my address is 6353 Lee Vista Boulevard in Orlando, Florida, and my last name is H-I-N-S-O-N. I have been with the Masonry Association, it seems like forever. I was associated with them back when I worked for a mason contractor in Naples, Florida, and I have come in a, in a circuitous route to this position that I hold right now. But we are in the process of trying to partner with Marion Technical College to bring a masonry apprenticeship program to Ocala. And what this means to Ocala and to the school board is we will blend what you already have in progress in your high schools at Lake Weir and Donnellan and at Marion Technical Institute, your, what we call, pre-apprenticeship programs, where you're teaching young people about careers in the construction industry. We're hoping that some of those students, maybe all of those students, if we're lucky, will want to transition, will want to move from that pre-apprenticeship program into our full adult apprenticeship program. And what we're offering with that apprenticeship program is a career, a lifetime of good, solid earning power, and the ability to take those skills that they're going to learn in the apprenticeship program and, and make a lifetime career out of that, maybe become business owners, maybe become contractors and run their own business and hire many employees out of the Ocala area. Our apprenticeship programs are three years. They are, the curriculum base is from NCCER, which is the National Center for Construction Education Research. And at the end of their program, this three-year program that we will be joint partnering with, with Marion Technical College, they will have a certification from the State of Florida Department of Education. They will have a certification from NCCER, and they will be a qualified journey person because we have men and women as masons, and they do, they do beautiful work. So I am hoping that we will be able to go forward with this program. We're all excited. I have with me my team of, you may know Jim.
Bodyguards.
Bodyguards. These are my bodyguards. I heard, I heard it was a, it was a wild town. This is Jim Painter. He is the Executive Director for the CMEC, which is the Concrete Masonry Education Council that Governor Rick Scott put into place. Al Herndon, who works for the Masonry Apprentice and Education Foundation and will be the coordinator for this program here, and Mr. Jerry Painter, conveniently brother of Jim Painter, and the owner of Painter Masonry, and the president of your local chapter, your Masonry Association of Florida Local North Central Chapter. And they all are going to support this program. We had a meeting a week ago, and there were contractors, mason contractors, that came to Marion Technical College and pledged their support and their willingness to hire these apprentices as they're going through the program. Because part of our program is not just the curriculum that they come to the school and they learn, but it is the job that they will get with a local contractor who will in turn take those skills and allow them to practice and fulfill their dream for a great career. I thank you very much for your time, and thank you for letting me speak today.
We look forward to working with you. Thank you. It's exciting.
Beth.
Uh, excuse me.
Just before, just before you leave, Mark, can you just come up and tell us how this is going to fit into our program? And let me just say this to you, an apprenticeship is one of the things that I've been talking about for years. And, and when I say this, this is, this is closer to meeting some of the things that I've, I felt our vocational program should be doing. Can you tell us a little bit more how they're going to fit into what we?
And here comes the broken record part. Remember, the third goal is to help meet the workforce and economic development needs of our community. So here's the vision at Marion Technical College. We want to create an apprenticeship academy. Currently, MTC has had an electrical apprenticeship, and they've had one for years. We are now going to expand into the masonry apprenticeship, and then hopefully we will bring back to you over the upcoming months, a contr- bring back to you over the upcoming months a contract for plumbing, a contract for HVAC, and a contract for carpentry. That's also, we'll have five, that's the vision, is to have five apprenticeship programs under the umbrella of Marion Technical College. And then, as Donna said, we'll start building backwards and create pre-apprenticeship programs in the high school. So, that's where we're going, and this will be our second apprenticeship program, and we're awfully excited to partner with the Masonry Association.
Mark, how will this program reach across the county?
The, well, for, as a post-secondary institution, students, adults, will be able to come in and enroll. So, we can have students from Bellevue to Donnellan, adults from the North Marion area all the way out to Lake Weir. So, any adult who is interested in enrolling this program needs to contact Marion Technical College, and we will walk them through how they can enroll. So, that would be the way to do it. Then, as a high school student who is interested in a pre-apprenticeship program, Marion Technical Institute will start recruiting here in the upcoming months. And any student who's interested in the trades, we will welcome them and invite them to enroll and to come to Marion Technical Institute to start their journey in high school, then through to the post-secondary institute at MTC.
Okay. And the cost of equipment and things like that? I know it's taken care of, I just like to hear you talk about it.
Well, for high school, there is no charge. There will be a fee for the post-secondary, but it is very, very affordable, it's very reasonable. And again, that's something that we can work with the association and Career Source to help fund those students or those adults who are in financial...
Okay. Thanks, Mark. And this is what I've been looking for, for years. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Mark Avery.
My name's Mark Avery, A-V-E-R-Y. I live at 3 Diamond Ridge Way, Ocala, Florida, 34472. I am the president of the Marion Education Association. And tonight, I would like to speak to the board about following, speak to the board about an employee contract that is on the agenda for this evening. I speak to you on behalf of this because for the last few years, we've heard the board say, "Let's follow the rules that we have in place," on, to whoever they're asking that question to, "Follow the rules." So, I am asking you to follow your own advice and follow the rules. When you make contracts and determine pay levels, you put in what we traditionally call steps. And some are individual steps, some are group steps. The teachers used to have them, the paraprofessionals have them, the IU PAT workers have them. Evidently, they're also in the administrative contract. So, if I was someone who was on step five and I completed this year, then I go to step six. Well, if five and six are in the same block, then I stay in that block until I've completed year six. And all I'm asking you is to follow your own rules and your own guidelines on something like this. And that's what I would ask. Since you have specifically said that over the years, to follow the rules, I'm asking you to do the same thing and to follow the rules. Thank you.
Maria Tribble?
Hello. My name is Maria Tribble. I live at 170244th Street here in Ocala. I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to ask a question, and I'd also like to thank Beth McCall. I was an educator for several years. I taught English in Alabama before we moved here, and it's just really good to see hard work rewarded. And also, the members who were here from Marion Technical. My oldest son, actually, we are really thrilled that he just started the welding program there. It's made a really big difference in him, in our lives. So, I think that's a really worthwhile program. I'm here today as a mother, as a former educator for many years. I'm also a novelist of young adult fiction. I am the mother of young girls. I write books for young girls. I cherish young girls. I cherish the role model that we must be for them and for our children. I had hoped we would find an educational home here in Ocala. Unfortunately, instead of focusing on those issues, which I think should unite us, I find myself facing deep divisions and an atmosphere that seems to be deeply partisan, not focusing on our children and not focusing on their welfare, but instead, sometimes putting personal partisan things ahead of our children.
Ms. Tribble, I thought this was a cyberbullying question.
Yes, ma'am. I'm getting to that point. My question is, the partisan divide seems to be bleeding over into what seems to be cyberbullying online, bullying in general, but also cyberbullying. And my question to the board is simply this. I was able to look online and find policies that addressed bullying when it happened to students, when it happened to employees from parents, but what happens if it happens to a parent online and it's perpetuated by a board member or by a school official or an employee? Is there a policy to protect parents? What is that procedure? And if one does not exist, what can we do to put one in place? That's my question.
Mr. Ellers? Mr. Ellers?
I believe Mr. David Ellers is here.
I'll meet you in the lobby.
And he will meet you in the lobby. He will go over our cyberbullying, but I'm very willing to talk to you about your concerns later. But Mr. David Ellers would be able to fill you in on what our policies are, and he's here, and he will meet you in the lobby.
Well, do I have to go now? Can I stay?
No, you don't have to go now. No, not at all. You may stay. You may stay, but he will be here for the remainder of the meeting, too. Okay? Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Is that all?
I remind those others that have public comment that you will have your opportunity to speak as soon as the business portion of the meeting is over. May I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 68.1 with the exception of C-7.1 that has been moved under discussion? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. James.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Boynton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please vote aye. An opposed like sign?
No, so we don't discuss. It's already been made. Oh, okay. It's a dog. We can't see it. Discussion.
May I have a motion to approve the agreement with N2Y LLC for Unique Learning System, Symbol Sticks Prime, and News2U Subscription? Superintendent Mayor, you have some additional remarks regarding this.
Yes, I wanted Dr. Elves, who's the director of our Exceptional Student Education Department, to address this in the next item, just in the spirit of transparency.
Good evening. Unique Learning Systems is the Department of Education-approved curriculum set of materials that we use for students who are on a modified curriculum. These are students who have significant cognitive disabilities, and this is, does not impact a large population of our students here in Marion County, but it does, it gives you three different levels for students to work on, from actually reading the sentences and answering curriculum questions to hand-over-hand selecting one-word picture answers. And that is what this system is for. It is used with about 600 of our students here in the district, and it is the primary method of us delivering our instruction to those students.
Okay. Any questions? May I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Boynton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. James. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please vote aye and opposed like sign. May I have a motion to approve the request to purchase license renewals from Scientific Learning, Inc.?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. James. Seconded by Ms. King. And Dr. Mayor, you have some additional remarks concerning this.
Dr. Elves.
As we spoke about unique learning systems being for our students on a modified curriculum, Fast Forward is for students with disabilities who are having significant difficulties in acquiring the skills that they need to be successful. It is used with a very small portion of our students, about 160 students currently in the district. And these are for students that we have tried multiple other interventions that have not made a difference for our students. There is a decision tree that we go through to determine whether or not this is an appropriate intervention to use with the students. And as you can see, it is not used with a large number of students, but it is one of those last-type interventions that we go in and look at for students that are really just struggling and not making a difference with everything else we've tried.
Any questions, board?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor, vote aye and opposed like sign. May I have a motion to approve the first amended School Board Attorney employment agreement? RE Paul D. Gibbs Esquire.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. James and seconded by Ms. Boynton. Is there any discussion?
Let me just share this, though, so everybody. When we first, as a school board, we wanted to go with the in-house attorney. And I think I was in Howie in the Hills, and we had our first interview, and we started looking for an attorney. We went through a process of really looking all over the country, and we brought in specialists to really help us in this endeavor. We ended up hiring an attorney. We ended up hiring an attorney, and a few years later, a couple of years, how many years, this attorney ended up leaving for us, leaving. He resigned, and he moved on. And we were very fortunate, though, to open up the process for looking for an attorney again. And we did find an excellent attorney. He's sitting over there. And one of the things that we said in our interview, we would give him some time to find out if he really would work out, and he did, and he's done an exceptional job. And we knew at that point that we would be looking at moving him to at least the level of the person that we relieved that resigned, terminated his contract with us because of that. And he came in and has worked diligently to provide us the service that we need. He has provided things beyond what we were getting from our past attorney, whether it was in-house or et cetera. He has done exceptional. And this is why I lead the charge, that we need to make sure that we keep our word and move him to the level in which I think he deserves.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, vote aye and opposed like sign. Motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the amended assignment and assumption of ground leases for Greenway Elementary and Anthony Elementary?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Boynton, seconded by Mr. James. Ms. Boynton, you pulled this item from consent.
Yeah, I pulled this to discuss a conflict on this item. The owner of, I gave money for my campaign. As a result, I'm not comfortable to voting on this item, such as our, recusing myself on this vote.
Okay. All right. That's fine. There's no other discussion. All those in favor, please vote aye and opposed like sign. Motion passed 4-0 with one, Ms. Boynton abstaining. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of $85,939.26. $2,500 to Dr. NH Jones from their business partner, Dr. Quinn Family Dentistry via the Public Education Foundation. $2,500 to Fort King Middle School from their business partner, Pediatric Associates of Ocala, PA via the Public Education Foundation. $1,000 to Legacy Elementary from Crystal Automotive Motorcycle Group. $75,000 to Marion Technical College from the Morgue Ridge Family Foundation through United Way of Marion County. $1,500 to Marion Technical Institute from Ocala Outreach Foundation. $3,439.26 to Vanguard High School for B3R Sports, Inc. May I have a motion, please? Moved by Ms. Boynton and seconded by Ms. King. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please vote aye and opposed like sign. Mr. James, would you please thank all these wonderful contributors?
I sure will. On behalf of all the students and staff in the Marion County School System, I really would like to thank our donors that have provided some additional funds to our schools. And it's always a pleasure to read the number of people and the businesses that really support our schools, so it's always a great sign. So, again, I wanna just thank you for that. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. James. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, October 18th, 2018, at 9:00 AM. Excuse me. The purpose of the work session is to discuss 2019 tentative work session schedule, strategic plan update, regroup notification, Reddit call your update, future extended day opportunities, and teacher resources update. We also have an employee hearing October 10th, which is tomorrow, at 9:30, and an employee hearing October 17th at 9:30. It is now the time that we will move into the other public comments for this evening. I do remind you that speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Prior to me calling the first guest, I have a prepared statement that I would like to read. As chairman, I want the community to understand that I have no authority over any other board member. My job as chairman is to keep the board focused on the business of the board. I am challenged with distractions that take away from that business. I want to acknowledge those citizens who have come tonight to declare their outrage at comments a board member made on her personal Facebook page. I, too, personally angered and appalled at the repulsive, degrading, and insensitive comments unbefitting a public official, especially a school board member who is to work diligently for the betterment of our students. Public officials are held to a higher standard and should understand that all comments, whether public or private, reflect on the office they hold. However, I reiterate again that I have no authority over any other board member. The comments were made on a personal page and not associated with the Marion County Public Schools. The comments have been widely circulated in the community. They have no place in public discourse. They do not in any way reflect this board or this school district. These comments and this behavior do not portray the traits of a leader that our community aspires in its elected officials. Community leaders and organizations work hard to bring a spotlight to Ocala, Marion County, to sell the assets of our community, to bring new businesses to help our economy thrive. Yesterday's comments were not the spotlight they wanted. If an elected official is unable to act or express one's views with decorum, show respect for others, including those whose opinions may not align with their own, or refrain from inflammatory remarks, I suggest that the public official think deeply about the responsibility this community has entrusted... this community has entrusted to them and consider if public office is for them. Ladies, ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, I, I would ask that there be no applause. I would like to keep this civil. And I would like very much to maintain the decorum that this board, and respect for this board. Thank you. Michael Farrow.
Should we cut these things to three minutes?
Yes, because we have so many, we, your statements will be three minutes.
My name is Michael Farrow. I live at thirty-six seventeen Northeast Nineteenth Place here in Ocala, Florida, three four four seven zero. Understanding the pressures of the situation and everyone that's here, I'm gonna basically just kind of wing it. I don't have a speech prepared, but I'm gonna keep my word civil, respectful, short, and to the point. The person that, of course, we all know that is, is a subject of the, the comments that were made, has made these comments as not reflective of the, at least in my opinion, reflective of the Marion County School Board, the positive image that they try to portray in regards to the community and its students. Now, while the person in question, you do have a right to your opinion, and you do have a right to voice that opinion on a social forum. The First Amendment protects you in that, in that, in that right. You should still at least maintain your, what you're saying, should keep it in a professional manner. Because you do hold that position where it is, maintains a detriment to our students and how they're, in our schools, basically. To keep this short and to the point, this person, again, was, I found the, I found the comments completely deplorable and despicable, again, but again, she has the right to her opinion. But as I always say, you can often get your point across without putting poison on the end of the spear. Have a good night.
Sarah Clifton.
My name is Sarah Clifton. I live at twelve seventy, eleven seventy-one northeast, I can't remember my address, twelve seventy-one northeast eleventh circle here in Ocala. I had written a few thoughts down, but if you'll notice on my paper that I turned in, the title was decorum. And Chair McCall reflected much of what I would like to have said, and she said it better. Congratulations to your recognition for being such an outstanding advocate for Marion County students. That reflects well on all of us in Marion County, on us as a community, on our school system, as the whole at large. But is it going to be eclipsed now? Because once again, we have been held up to scorn and mockery. Yes, the First Amendment protects all of our right to speak, this, all of us have a right to speak. But it does not protect us from the consequences of that speech. And for a member, an elected member of the board for Marion County Schools to, for all intents and purposes, tell every young girl out there that she's a whore if she happens to be assaulted by somebody is outrageous. And I don't appreciate it when that, when Nancy Stacy smiles about it, that it's funny, that she enjoys, excited to comment, time a conservative leader out of the liberal progressives on how they encourage women to destroy men promoted by immoral communist-driven media. Part of the map to communism is to destroy the nation's morals, own the press, and destroy the family unit. They have almost done it by brilliantly pumping drugs into minority areas like I, like our inner cities. She is not fit to serve on the board that has anything to do with educating young people. She should resign. I don't have that power. None of us do. Unfortunately, we are not a charter county. We don't have the option to recall her. But we can out her as not qualified by her moral standing, by not operating with any decorum or sense of decency, and by calling young girls who are, and young women, who are victims of sexual assault, whores. Maybe if you'd keep your children, your sons better, we wouldn't have to worry as much about our daughters.
Ladies and gentlemen, I will adjourn the meeting if we do not keep decorum. Sandra J. Israel.
People know me as Sandy, seven three eight Southeast Thirty-first Avenue, Ocala, Florida, three four four seven one. Just wanted to note, I just got back from Baltimore for my fiftieth high school reunion, which was kind of exciting. I didn't realize everybody got so old. But I'm also here to speak about the comments that I saw on Facebook. Many of you people in here don't know that one of the kids who started Facebook came from Ocala. And as a matter of fact, I went to his bar mitzvah. And that goes back a few years. But the comments on, by a member of the board was atrocious. I mean, you know, Gold in My Year, back in nineteen forty-nine, a woman was shot in Tel Aviv. They said, we maybe we should put a curfew on women. And Gold in My Year came back and said, why don't we put a curfew on men to save the women? And I just want, you know, the comments were totally atrocious. But I had to thank Sarah, her comments were absolutely brilliant. Thank you.
Charles Thomas Collins.
My name's Chuck Collins, C-O-L-L-I-N-S. Address is ten eleven Southeast Fifth Street, Ocala, Florida, three four four seven one. I'll read my prepared statement, though it echoes Chairman McCall, what you said. I have two children in Marion County Public Schools, a fifth grader and a seventh grader. To this board, I say, as an elected official, you serve at the pleasure of the voting citizens of Marion County. You sought the position willingly, and you are compensated for doing so. As an elected public official, your actions and speech are frequently on display and frequently a matter of public record. Accordingly, a certain level of decorum and professionalism is expected of you, both in your public lives and in your private lives while you serve. This may seem unfair that your private speech and actions are scrutinized in such a manner. But as an elected representative of this county, you represent the citizens of this county. And your behavior is a reflection on the citizens of this county and on the board on which you serve. Recent comments by one board member reflect poorly on this county and on this board. These comments are not appropriate for an elected official, even more so inappropriate for a member of this school board to express publicly. No advance was made. No problem was solved. No association was strengthened. No grade was improved, no relationship improved by these comments. There was nothing positive to be gained by the utterance made. I ask each of you to consider the consequences of your actions and your speech on this community and on the students to whom you willingly serve. In conclusion, if you, as a public official or as a private individual, cannot seem to hold your tongue, act like a professional, and do those things that will make a positive impact on this community and the students of this community, for the time that you are in office, I would suggest that you do the citizens and the students of this county a favor and simply resign. Thank you, and thank you for your time.
Pedro Comas.
Pedro A. Comas, everybody knows me, a Tito. I've been a resident, well, twelve forty-four Northeast Twelfth Place, Ocala, Florida. Been a resident of Ocala, Marion County, for over forty years. I own thirty-six pieces of property here and would like to address the board. Thank you, first of all, everybody, for being here and doing what you do. But I would like to address somebody personally and look at the eyes. Ma'am? Yes, it's for you, not for anybody else. Okay? These people have all been, have done what they're supposed to do.
Except y'all have the wrong information, so go ahead.
Well, I'm just showing you what you wrote.
Well, that, that's true. I do believe that. But you don't understand that-
At any rate-
Stacy, it is not your time.
At any rate, all I'm here for is to follow up on what everybody else has said, and I do agree, you should resign. I also, if that's not possible, I really would like you to be suspended without pay, if that is another option. I don't know what, what the school board, some people say, okay, the school board is not part of the school administration, but you know what? That's like saying Sprite is not part of Coca-Cola. It's all under the same umbrella. So as a citizen, I ask that this will not sit and will not be let down. Something needs to be done. I have three children that graduated from Vanguard High School here. I also have grandchildren. And you do not represent, and I say that directly to you, you do not represent me or any of the people right here. That is not the way that any professional in that kind of a seat should do. Okay? Thank you very much.
Daniel Clay Tribble.
My name is Daniel Clay Tribble. I live at seventeen oh-two Northwest Forty-fourth Street in Ocala. I have one child that has graduated from Marion County Schools. I have one that's in kindergarten and one that is at the Technical College now. Everybody in this room knows that this country is in the midst of probably the most divided, partisan environment that we have ever lived through. That's, that's really irrelevant, though, because the, the position of an elected school board member in the state of Florida is supposed to be a non-partisan position. Yet we have one board member who has injected personal partisan politics into the business of the school board on more than one occasion. One example that comes to mind is after the shooting at Forest High School last year. Had a school board member identified herself as such, Chiron on television identified her as such, inject personal partisan views into that issue. I find that unacceptable. Same member has attacked me personally for my political views, and I have no confidence that my children will not be punished for the political affiliation of the father. That, that is a real concern to me.
Is this name?
I, I do not know.
Is this your name, sir? I don't even know-
My name is Dan Tribble. You know me.
I don't know you at all.
Mr. Tribble, please continue.
This is a serious issue. And, and I, and my question for the board is, is at what point, at what point do you have a responsibility to be self-policing? What action can you take so that the rest of us, the citizens of this county, feel like they're heard and that their children are, are safe? You know, moral turpitude used to be a thing that people were fired for. I don't know if that's something that exists here. If it isn't, it should be. I'm deeply, deeply disappointed. I moved to Florida from Alabama because I wanted to give my children a better, a better chance at a better education. This is not what I came here for. Thank you.
Matthew Wardell.
Matt Wardell, nine ten Southeast Second Street, and last name's W-A-R-D-E-L-L. Madam Chair, board members, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this afternoon. Madam Chair, congratulations on your award earlier. It's not a more deserving board member in the state, so I'm happy you got that. I'll be brief and try not to rehash the statements that have already been made. I think there's been a lot of great points made, and I think you're all aware of the statements that, that were made yesterday. And I'm conscious of the decisions that you each make on a daily basis, the behind-the-scenes work that all of you put in before and after each of the public meetings that the people here see. And that there's always two sides to every decision you make. I know a lot of people don't see that, and it's very difficult to be in the seats that you're in. And I, I respect that and appreciate each of you for being in the seats that you are. With that said, it's quite unusual for me, as an elected official, to comment on the behavior of my colleagues who sit on other elected bodies. I hope you know that. It's a little awkward for me to be here. I don't take it lightly, and I'm not here out of any sense of disrespect for anyone who sits up there, and I hope you know that. The views expressed yesterday were, were outrageous. Blaming victims for crimes committed against them is absolutely indefensible. Some have argued today that Ms. Stacy has a right to believe what she wants. And, and I, and I believe that if, if Ms. Stacy were anyone else but an elected member of the Marion County School Board, that that would be correct. But she's not anyone else. She's a member of this school board, and she should be held to a higher standard, as each of you are and have conducted yourselves for all the years that you've been on the school board. To carry on Mr. Collins' point, in John Maxwell's book, The Twenty-One Irrefutable Laws of Leadership, he describes, I think it's like number eighteen, the law of sacrifice. And he describes it as something that all leaders must make. And he says leaders must, quote, "give up in order to go up." And he says, and I was thinking, to apply that law to what we do as elected officials, I would argue that we have to give up some of our individual expressive freedoms when we become representatives of an entire city, county, or school district, and that we would be held to the highest standards when communicating with the world via a platform like social media that is only, that is available to any of the forty-three thousand students or three hundred and fifty thousand residents of this county. As a quick aside, I did see Stacy's response in ocala.com today. And I have to say, as an elected Republican, whose day job is as a symphony orchestra conductor, who spent most of my college years studying Bach and Beethoven, being called names like a radical was pretty neat for me and, and a new experience. But anyways, I'll leave you with two questions. Are we okay with young men who you represent and who should be able to look to you for leadership, thinking that they're not young men but lions, wild animals, who cannot control themselves in the presence of women, even if those women say no? And if those lions happen to commit a rape, it's certainly not their fault, because it's, it's on those young women who made the mistake of, quote, "walking into a lion's den." And are we okay with the idea that a young girl who decides to go to a graduation party and maybe is peer pressured into having a beer or taking some pill or smoking a joint, being taken advantage of or raped and feeling like it's, quote, "her fault," or that she was, quote, "looking for trouble," and that she's now a, quote, "whore" because of what she read of a Marion County School Board member saying on Facebook? I'm not okay with those things. I know none of you are, and I hope that you'll express that view after this meeting tonight. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Robert Jenkins.
Robert Jenkins, J-E-N-K-I-N-S, one one four zero East Fort King Street. I apologize for my dress. This is how I dress. Thank you for the privilege to address all of you. My name is RJ Jenkins. I'm a resident of Marion County. I am here tonight because, like all of you, I care about the students in our school. I am, after all, a very proud uncle of five children currently, currently being educated in Marion County and Sarasota County Public Schools. And I care about the integrity and success of our public education, and I believe our elected officials should represent the values of the community that they represent. Tonight, I am here to call for the immediate resignation of a school board member because she has made clear publicly and repeatedly that she does not represent the values of the community that has become my home. I am the product of Sarasota County Public School System, where I was taught and nurtured by gifted teachers and dedicated administrators. I went on to pursue post-secondary education at Columbia University, the University of Cambridge, and Harvard University. I relocated to New York, from New York City to Ocala two years ago for my family. I live in one of Ocala's four beautiful historic districts, and I currently work at Columbia University as an educator of veterans who are working to earn their college degrees. The board member in question has made it quite clear that she believes in open, honest, and apologetic communication, so allow me to be open, honest, and unapologetic. My friends and colleagues in the Northeast were a little worried about me moving to Ocala. They were- They were worried that I might encounter intolerance, ignorance, hatred, prejudice against women, gay people, and people of color. I am happy to report, however, that their concerns turned out to be, what do you call it? Fake news. Because every single person I have met in this community has been welcoming, open, kind, warm, generous, helpful, accepting, and community-minded. In fact, I have not had in two years in Ocala a single interaction, even with people with whom I vehemently disagreed, that was, wasn't animated by respect, and that wasn't a credit to the character of this community, until yesterday, when I was alerted to the comments on Facebook. I have a high enough regard for this body not to think it necessary to explain to all of you why it is unacceptable for a member of the Marion County School Board to refer to women as whores, to claim that some women deserve to be raped because it's what's coming to them, and to suggest that a man convicted of drugging and raping women deserves to be set free. I'm going to trust that all of you can wrap your heads around why those things are not okay to think, let alone to say, especially in a public forum. I do not find these comments abhorrent because I am a special snowflake, or because I'm a withering flower, or because I am a radical progressive, or because I am some fragile coastal elite who needs a pacifier and a safe space. No, I find them abhorrent because I'm a decent human being, and because I believe that our elected officials should represent what is best about our community, not what is worst about it. Thank you.
Andy Anthony Diaz. Oh, Leanne, if you'll wait just a minute.
Leah.
Leah, I'm sorry. Andy Anthony Diaz, please state your name and address, and you will have three minutes.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Andy Diaz. I live at 3003 Northeast 49th Street of Ocala, Florida. I recently graduated from Vanguard High School in May, and I am currently studying at the College of Central Florida. There was a Facebook, personal Facebook page public regarding convicted sex offender Bill Cosby, and this school board member used vulgar language and offensive post-shaming victims, which he reports to, as we all know the word, saying it was their fault that they were drugged and raped. This person deleted this, the post soon after people discovered, and comments, and comments of her stability and ability to be a community leader were brought to light. Her reasoning for these quotes were, and I quote, "wackadoodle liberals." This isn't the first time this person referred to someone who simply disagrees, refer as a fascist liberal, instead of trying to listen to concerned citizens. She simply bullies them and blocks them, which I think is kind of ironic, because this person called her higher-up a bully for, to her employees, but here she is blocking and bullying citizens, concerned parents, concerned students, and they should not be serving our community because we are better than this. The question that I leave for all of you today is, Madam Chairman answered very clearly, and I do respect that, and very well put. What I do ask about this person, who I shall not name since we all know who this person is, is, are you going to step down? Does this really reflect your view on Marion County? I don't know if you're looking, I know you were uncontested for the year 2016, and that will not happen for the year 2020 if you do not step down. And, thank you.
Leah Pam Carlson.
My name is Leah Pam Carlson. I live at 337 Oak Track Course, Ocala, Florida. My name is Leah Pam Carlson on Facebook and on my government-issued ID. We do have members up here of the school board who did make posts, that I have screenshots of, who blocked me for saying my views, and honestly, I could be the person that she's calling a whore. I am a victim of sexual assault. I'm a product of the Marion County School System, and I am absolutely appalled by the comments made by somebody who's being baited by my tax dollars. I think it's disgraceful that these kind of human beings are still out there. Sorry to say that. I didn't prepare a statement. I didn't plan on doing this. I'm just outraged, honestly, by this, and I, I guess I could be the person that she said, she was baiting people in, is what she said. Okay, my friends, I set up a post to suck evil, venomous, progressive liberals. I guess that's me here to tirelessly stalk me. I don't tirelessly stalk you. You're a member on the Marion County School Board, and you have a public Facebook page. If you don't want people to know what you're saying, there's a privacy setting that you could put on there. You blocked me for putting my input on your public page. That's not right. It's not. Anybody can comment on mine. I didn't block hers, but anything I say is blocked. My opinion doesn't matter because of her. That is all.
Marcia Saradsky. I hope I said your name right, Martha.
You said that perfectly, and I'm quite impressed. It's rare. So, my name is Marcia Saradsky. I live at 357 Southeast 90th Street here in Ocala. I'm a product of the Marion County School System. I attended Oak Crest, Howard Middle, and Vanguard High School, and also a product of CF. I'm a registered nurse in this community. I've lived here all my life, obviously. I have three sons that are currently in various schools throughout the county. One has graduated. So, I have a lot of, a long-time experience with the Marion County School Board. Some people have served on the Board that were teachers of mine, that highly respected and administrators as well. As I said, I serve as a registered nurse in this community. It's my pleasure to serve this community. This community has done fantastic things for myself and my family. I was raised by a disabled father in this community and found nothing but love and support here. I tell you all this not to give you my life story, except to say that I have high expectations of all of you, serving this county. This is my home. This is where I stayed to raise my children. It's my husband's home and his family's home, and we hope to keep it as home for generations to come. I'm very proud when I say that I graduated from Vanguard High School. I'm very proud of the experience I had there, very proud of the administrators that were there, and some of which, as I said earlier, went on to serve throughout the county in administrative positions. I look back on those people with respect and admiration. Chair McCall, you remind me of one in particular, and I appreciated coming to this meeting tonight, where I knew tempers would be high, and seeing the award that was bestowed on you. I don't know you personally, but obviously, those who in the know saw fit to bestow that on you for the work that you've done, and I appreciate that. I appreciate that there's still integrity on this Board. I appreciate those of you who have served several terms and desire to continue to serve, and I do appreciate that you are doing so in the midst of all this chaos. Now, that said, I am the mother of three sons, and I am literally having to encounter at work, at home, and as I'm going out about in this community, with this divisiveness of male versus female. I am absolutely a mama bear, but not in the context you put that in. I teach my sons to respect women. I teach my sons that no means no. I am a victim of assault, and I teach my sons that to call women, I don't care if they actually have a, if they're with their head in a car, accepting payment for services about to be rendered. We don't address women that way, and that is what I teach my boys. I expect a higher standard. I understand that there are confines with what you can do, but the community is looking towards you. Do not let this slip again. We've had this happen on more than one occasion, with inappropriate commentary, inappropriate exchanges, and the community has had enough. So, decide today what you're going to do, but don't let us down. Thank you.
I want to thank all of you for your comments this evening and for the civility that you displayed. There will be no Board comments this evening. We will move on before addressing expulsion matters. Ms. McCall? There are no Board, there are no Board comments. Mrs. Stacy, I believe that we have heard all we need to hear from you today. And that word means... Ms. Stacy, no comments. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge the Board members have received the alternate placement list for students through September 20th. Mrs. Martinez Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
I would like to ask the Board to override and let Board comments and concerns come tonight. Ms. Clifton? Mr. James? I have a right to respond to this because so much was so untrue.
You have already responded all day.
So much was so untrue. We can override her.
Before we get that...
Can we override?
Paul, what do we have on that?
If the Board wants to talk?
Do we have anything? Do we have a precedent?
Do, precedent? Or do we have anything?
The Board votes to override the Chair.
I, I would have to research it. I mean, I couldn't tell you right now off the top of my head.
Because the Board can vote to have comments, just because the Chair decides not to allow a Board member to speak, I believe that the Board can override the Chair with a vote of the Board to have our say.
It's the Board's meeting, but yeah.
Because there was so much said that was untrue.
I would have to research it before I could give you a straight answer.
Because there was so much stated here that was absolutely so untrue.
What I know that I can do is I can adjourn the meeting, and I will adjourn the meeting at...
Where am I with this?
Mr. James, there are no comments from the Board tonight. No comments.
This is typical of women who do not want to represent male...
Meeting is adjourned at 6:51.
I'll speak to the cameras. Don't worry. I would like to say my comments to you on camera.